Would like to call the meeting, Planning Commission meetings on November the ninth twenty-three. Any like to have a roll call, please?
Sure. Abe Gassimpar?
Here.
Brent Linford, absent. Kaylee Mills?
Here.
Erin Rooney?
Present.
Shelby Vreeland, absent, but we do have a quorum.
Item number two is in a public comment, which is not regard to the agenda.
If I may, Mr. Chair, I have one. Just one of those things to be kind of transparent in that because we had the item that was that planned unit development that was on Lincoln Avenue. And you guys know why it hasn't gone forward, but in case people are listening along, that application for what was originally a three-unit development turned into two with withdrawn. So that's why it hasn't been on a Planning Commission application, or I mean, agenda. And obviously because of that, it will not be moving forward at all.
They withdraw their applications?
The what?
They withdraw their applications.
Yeah, exactly. So they would have to have a whole new submittal if they wanted to.
Yeah, I'm glad. Number three is approval of previous minutes on September fourteenth twenty-three.
A regular meeting.
We only have, yeah, I was gonna say, we don't have enough here, so we'll just table that until the next one.
So we go to item number four, which is a PC application number twenty-three dash zero one-four. Discussion and possible action on a request for a rezone from R one, a single-family dwelling, to R two, which is general residential for a property located eighteen twelve West Noble, which is a legal description as Capitol Heights, number two, addition block two and lot nine to eleven. Like to have?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you indicated, this is a rezone from R one to R two. R two allows more than one unit on the property. The property is currently developed with a home. It's obviously being utilized for a single-family use. The new owner would like to turn it into a two-unit development, so a duplex. Per the current zoning, which is R one, it would only allow one unit. Thus, the need to rezone to R two. The comprehensive plan for that area is basically commercial along there. If we had an updated comprehensive, or a updated land use plan, it likely would be more residential in nature, but would still be with a medium-density, you know, limited multifamily-type use. So again, you know, duplex, triplex-type developments in that. But probably the commercial side, I'm not sure it'll ever get to that. As I indicated, the, you know, they're looking for duplex. Per the current code, you need to have at least an eight thousand square foot lot for a duplex and then two thousand square feet for each additional unit. The current lot is ten thousand five hundred square feet, so it would, by code, you could have up to three units on there if it were rezoned R two. Given the physical constraints of it, I really doubt that even if the house were to be demoed, that it would be anything more than a duplex. In that, obviously, in this case, it's not being demoed. But it would have to be smaller units in order to do the three. But anyway, I just, you know, wanted to throw that out there, that even if they take the house away, the most they could do is three units. There's no ability to do large unit development, given the lot size. The, because of the house, obviously, not being demoed, staying the same, it maintains character of the neighborhood. And even from an R one to an R two, there's really no difference in traffic or anything like that. So the built environment, again, really will not change. Nobody will probably even know there's maybe an additional unit in there in that. So with all that factored in, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the rezone from R one to R two. Obviously, there's citizens here, so I'll leave it back to you guys if you have any questions for me, and then we can open it up to the public.
Yeah, these limits that you have on eight thousand square footage for two and a two thousand for additional, they need to be attached, or they need to, there could be a single?
They could be single. You could have two small, you could have two single families. You could have detached. It all boils down to the number of units, total units.
Is the applicant here?
The applicant is not here.
Not here?
Yeah.
So if the public has, would like to open a public comment. You all have, go ahead, back podium, please.
My name's Randy Ellis. I live in the house behind the property, behind and down one. When he said that he didn't feel like there would be any change in traffic or anything like that, it's, it's got a driveway that you can put three cars in. If they put parking in the back, it's gonna be a mud hole unless they completely concrete that and make it a parking lot. They're gonna have to get to that by the alley that runs behind it. And if you start taking multiple vehicles up and down an alley on a regular basis, I don't know if any of y'all have an alley behind your house. But Guthrie does not maintain them, and they are what they are while they're there. I keep track of my grass behind my house in the pathway, as well as other neighbors do. But it would impact parking. You can't park on the street, I mean, you can't park on the grass. That's a law in Guthrie, I believe. So, and then it's a traffic hazard pulling in and out that parking lot, if you've got four cars there on the Noble, that could be an issue. If you say right now that it can be, they're looking at a duplex, but they could supposedly break it down to make it more units, that would not benefit the neighborhood, even on Noble. So, I mean, that's my, that's my biggest concern right there. And I'm not talking about, you know, no, that's my big concern right there. Traffic, alley, parking in the backyard, no parking in the front yard if there's no remodeling or money spent. They did just spend a lot of money, the owner, I'm sure, spent a lot of money, taking a tree, an oak tree out that needed to be taken out. And I don't know if he's planning on taking the other one out or not, but, I mean, it kind of improved it. I don't know if that's where he's gonna put a parking lot. But a parking lot in the backyard is not favorable, but it's not my yard, okay?
Thank you.
That's what I had to say. I will say one other thing. They changed, and I appreciate everybody letting us know about this. Right across Seventeenth Street is, they changed the church into a place where clothing can be donated and handed out to other people, less fortunate people. And I can appreciate that. But that, too, is a traffic accident waiting to happen because there's not enough parking. They're open like Tuesdays and Thursdays, or two or three days. And I'm coming from Noble and turning on Seventeenth Street, and the people are parked in there, and they can't see anybody pulling out. I wish that had been brought to the attention of the people in the neighborhood, too, as well. Don't have a trouble with them being there, but that would have benefited discussion.
Mr. Ellis, thank you for coming tonight and sharing that. I did kind of have questions about parking as well, so I'm glad you brought that up. Is anyone living in that house right now?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
And the people that have been in there, it was, I think, like a husband and wife. And you, for like, we've been here for twelve years or so. And you really didn't ever hardly see them unless they were, you know, mowing or taking care of their yard. But there was two people in there.
Okay. Did they park in the back at all?
No, never, never. It's not a, you know, like I said, it was overgrown with trees and vegetation. So I'm not sure that the soil would be good, as even hard enough to park on. So that would be an issue.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments, please?
So I'm Bonnie Winslow. I live, see it down the street, at the corner of Seventeenth and Noble. So, down the street, across the street, so kinda county corner, not quite. I think exactly that, I have the exact same concerns. I'm relieved to know that they applied for a duplex and not more than that. The problem I have with the zoning is when it says generally, you're like, oops, that could be like a lot of people. And that concerned me, especially on Noble, especially where I think some of us are trying to maintain that historic feeling to that part of town. And so I was relieved to know it was a duplex. And honestly, I'm comfortable with that. The house now looks like it could be split into a duplex real easily. But the issue is getting in, and multiple cars coming off of there. It's hard enough if you live on Noble. Fortunately, I come off of Seventeenth. My garage is off of Seventeenth. But there's no garage there. There's a one-lane, a one-lane driveway. I don't know how, I don't know how they're gonna work that out. I mean, I hate to say this, but it makes more sense if they come in from the back. But I agree, in order to do that, they're gonna have to do a lot of the work to improve that, to make it that way. And so I would be, I guess, unless there was more to that package, and I realize you all maybe can't do it, but Dan does do that, where they can put more specifications on that? I don't know if you can or not.
No, well, yeah, I was just gonna wait till public comment, but it was over, but I can take care of it. They have to go through a permit process because there's certain building code provisions for duplexes, so they simply just can't go in there and say, you get this side, you get that side type of thing. Through that process, we would also look at parking to make sure that they have the required number as well as having a paved area or solid area. Because what's there now is legal nonconforming. They basically lose that by going to a duplex. So through that process, we make sure it meets all of the appropriate codes.
Well, I sure hate to see them put another, well, I sure hate to see that become a big concrete slab?
It probably won't, because they only require three spaces total.
Right, right. But I mean, they could go in there and pave the whole front yard, and then they could get people in and out of there. They could get, I mean, if they were to pave the whole front yard, then they could get at least three cars in there. And that just, I, I'm...
I don't see that happening.
You see it happening, they're gonna come in from the rear.
It's gonna come in from the rear, because the other thing that's in that area is the Guthrie proper overlay district, and it still applies. So even as a single family, you can no longer put parking in the front. It has to be in the back. So even as, even if somebody who's living there now, they could not pave the front.
Okay, well, that's, that is also good enough.
Because a lot of that is going back to, as what was indicated, to utilize how it was built in the early years with alleys and that, and keeping, you know, the more aesthetically appealing to the front, and then some of that other to the rear.
Right, right, right. Okay. And so that was my, that was my concerns. If indeed, this is, so my next question is, let's say they decide, well, you know, really, we wanna have, we wanna break this up into thirds. Do they have to come back again, but see, once they get this zoning?
No, they wouldn't. No, you're, you're right. Because as I indicated, by code, given the lot size that they have, they could have up to three units. However, again, through a building permitting process in that, there's gonna be building code requirements, parking requirements. I honestly do not see where it would be financially beneficial for them to try to break it in three, because they're gonna start to get into a lot of costs.
And that house is gonna be hard to make into three.
Right, because even, even from the building code, once you go from two units to three within a single building, you're in the commercial zoning code. Once you hit three or more units in a single building.
Okay.
That's why you traditionally see most go with one or two units, because you still stay under the one-two family. Because then they would have to have it sprinkled and a whole, a lot of other things. So like I said, I don't foresee that they would go that route.
Okay, okay. That's all I had.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
When you say whatever you're gonna say, when you say it, I mean, I didn't know who you were or what you did. So is there gonna be a question and answer period after this is done?
I'd be more than happy to stay around and talk with you, yes. I'm the planning director, so I oversee the planning department, which includes building and code enforcement. And then I do all the planning-related stuff like this, and, you know, the zoning code and stuff like that. But I'm more than happy to stay after and answer the question.
Stuff there that I have questions about?
That's fine, yeah. No, I'm more than happy to stay after, yeah.
State your name, please.
I'm Elia Seltis. I'm his wife, and I live in the same house. My question is, if they do put the parking in the back, is what, the extra parking? Previously, when there was a water leak or something in that yard, they had to dig it all out, and there was a major hole in the backyard. And they pulled the tree out, and it's just been a lot of trucks in and out. They backed into my neighbor, who is not able to be here tonight, backed into her gas meter. And she wasn't aware of it until the fire trucks were in the backyard, because there's a gas leak. Also, the gentleman that lived in the house, the reason he told me that he moved out of the house is because the people racing up and down the alley, you know, killed his cat. But that's besides the point. So, I mean, it's, the alley is not, it should not be used, okay? And the parking in the front is one row of parking. So if there's three cars in that parking, somebody's gonna have to back out to let that first car out. And if they're their neighbors, so it's gonna end up, somebody's got them in the garbage.
Yeah, I honestly don't remember the layout of the, of the back and that. But it would be, again, something that we would look at and ensure that it could function in the best manner possible. You're not wrong in the sense that with a lot of the alleys in the streets we have, you know, whether it's a single-family use, a duplex use, we have a lot of areas where vehicular traffic can be less than desirable in terms of, you know, and a lot of it has to do with the physical development of the areas. A lot of it has to do with drivers that honestly just, you know, drive too fast and, you know, don't care. So there's, you know, we do try to do our best to try to have the least amount of impact to any neighbor, even when they're doing construction and that. Because we do obviously have a inspector out there that will be looking at all the work that's being done to make sure it meets code. So we also make sure that other things like that aren't happening where, and in the back, too, they're gonna have to have it to where, you know, a suitable area and, you know, grade it out or whatever. They're just not gonna be able to go in there and throw some stuff in and say, we're good.
So, I have a question.
Yeah.
Can you put in their stipulation that they upgrade that alley, or at least part of it, or parts? Do they have a point of going out of it?
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Or gravel down?
Well, that's what I was gonna say.
Those issues, could you put that in there?
We usually look at that as well, even under new construction, in that where, like you said, it's probably not gonna be paved, because we're not gonna force them to pave an alley that everybody shares. But we do look at the condition of the alley, and in some cases, if needed, say, yeah, you need to bring in a little bit more gravel or graded, or do that, kind of do your part, especially now since you're, you know, improving what they upgraded use, for lack of a better word. Yeah, because like I said, right now, that alley's like most, it's legal nonconforming. So it isn't until we do have additional development like this where we can say, you know, yeah, you need to help out.
Well, I just want to restate that the driveway is not big enough for three cars without one, two, one or two cars having to move every time that first car wants out. And so it's gonna be two cars backing out to get the third car out, and it's gonna make a mess on Noble. And I think somebody's gonna end up parking in the yard, that we already have issues with that on that block.
Thank you. We'll take care of that. Any other comments? Any discussions?
Oh, I'm sorry.
My name's Marcus. I live on the corner lot that's directly next to this property. And I just came up really to learn more information about the plans for the property across from me. And, yeah, I would just like to say that, you know, I just bought this property about twelve months ago, and, you know, I've been doing renovations and everything. And I just wanted to make sure that, you know, this house wouldn't turn into an eyesore in a couple of years, you know, because of just the history of duplexes, triplexes, and other, you know, general residential housing. It usually doesn't, you know, leave the best mark on, you know, the town and like the place that they live in. I mean, there's a couple examples around town that, you know, everyone knows about. But other than that, it's just like, I feel like that's what people consider the bad part of town. And I just wouldn't, would hate to see, you know, stuff that perpetuates that in terms of like building triplexes and duplexes. And, you know, it's nice for a couple of years, and then later on, people get lazy. The owners get lazy. They don't care who lives in it, and, you know, things just go downhill. And I'm so close to that property that, you know, it kind of, it's a personal opinion of mine. It's just, you know, it ruins my idea of, you know, my first home, and the whole reason I chose to live in Guthrie is, you know, to preserve, you know, the charm that this town has. So I just wanted to say that.
Could you repeat your address again, please?
Say again?
Your address?
My address is eighteen oh eight West Noble Avenue. It's the corner property. Yes, sir.
It's not the bad part of town. We have no, we, right, we have no bad parts of town. That's it. It's just the west side.
Yeah. So I'd just like to say, I'm a big fan of housing density. I think it can be a good thing. It hasn't in the past. And it has to be done delicately and carefully. Because I believe personally that it can be done very well, and it can be an asset to the community. Unfortunately, we haven't seen a whole lot of good examples of that yet. And, you know, I, it always is heartbreaking to me when I see these projects, but then we don't see the applicant come, we don't see supplemental documents other than what our wonderful city staff has presented. And not only that, but this, this level of construction, changing a home from single, you know, residence into a duplex is quite complicated. It's not something that your average DIYer can do. Granted, we do have wonderful and incredibly intelligent code enforcement. They are, they, they've forgotten more than I'll probably ever know. But they're stretched thin. We've got nine hundred homes coming to town. And I personally would like to see this be able to happen and happen well. With that being said, I am very cautious, and I am, this, as of right now, makes me nervous. So I hope to see that it could come through, but right now, I'm worried about it.
Well, I have one of those letters, also own a piece of property, but a block from there on Warner. So I'm concerned also, but I prefer to have something going than just a building sitting up there empty, or...
That's true.
But if there's not any further discussion, I'll make a motion for approval subject to, limited to a duplex only.
We can't do that.
We can't do that?
No.
Then I'm not...
It's illegal, because it's considered contract zoning, and it's been proven through the courts for many years, so it's kind of all or nothing.
Yeah, he's requesting that he's gonna put a duplex in. So his application is asking to put a duplex in. So why not we just approve his application for a duplex?
Because, again, it's against the law. It's either all or nothing. And that's why I indicate that by code, the most that could be there regardless is three. He's intending to do a duplex, and, again, I highly doubt there would be three units there, because the financial commitment would not be worth saving that structure.
But then he could probably use it as R one and use it as special use for as a duplex, then can he?
No, because we don't have provisions in the code to go through a special use permit process to allow more than one unit. The only way the current code can do it is to rezone.
Do you have to go to the public to ask them, or they're gonna just randomly?
We prefer, because it would get it on record. It's easier to pick up on tape and that, so.
There's a couple of questions that came to my mind while you were talking, everybody's talking here. You know, we're talking about a duplex.
Uh huh.
Well, in these days, I'm not sure that anybody else is familiar with what happens, but a lot of times, people can't afford apartments. So when you say a duplex, that means that four or five families could live in a duplex. And then if you're saying, okay, well, we're gonna say that it can be a triplex. Well, then you're saying, okay, well, two or three families could live in each section of that. So I was saying, we're really not talking about three families.
But you could have the same amount in the single family right now.
Exactly.
Yeah.
But you're not gonna have ten people in a parking spot in that amount of area.
Yeah, the amount of money that it is gonna, and the amount of time that it's gonna take, I mean, they're looking at fire stops, they're looking, it, it's complicated. It's a significant investment. I wouldn't just rent it out as a slum.
Yeah.
I mean, I could give, I could show you a few examples where we probably have eight to ten people living in a house with six to seven vehicles, and it's a single-family residence.
And it's a single family. Okay, so multiply that times three.
But that usually doesn't happen.
But you're trying to compare what I'm saying to like what you're saying, and I'm saying it green with you. You got ten people living in a...
Right, but it doesn't, all I'm saying is it doesn't always equate to more vehicles, even if it's a duplex.
No, I mean, I'm not...
I'm not saying it can, I'm just saying that, yeah.
I mean, the time is here. But anyway, that's just something else that I'm gonna bring in.
And if they do do this, I mean, they might not even go through with it. But if they do, it doesn't look like they've done a lot of homework. And once they start doing it, it, like I said, it is costly and it is difficult.
Yeah.
And they will be required to put in more parking spots.
And I would put on record that, obviously, the owner is not here.
Mm-hmm. It goes on record.
That he should be here. He's wanting it to pass.
I don't disagree with you.
And number two, is he doing this because he can't afford to sell it? And so he's trying to make his money up by making it a dollar.
Yeah.
He just bought that property, I guess, not too long ago.
No, it hasn't been. It's been within the last year.
Oh, it's been in within the last, three or four months?
Yeah, it's been just in the last few months, I think, if I remember right, yeah.
But it has been for sale.
Oh, no, right. But I mean, the applicant, or the owner, the applicant just recently bought it, yeah.
Can I clarify something you said earlier about the parking? Are you saying that parking in the front is not allowed for...
Not single, well, it's more for single-family and duplex. For multifamily, it would allow it, but that's three units or more.
Okay.
Yeah.
So because it's a single family, the parking in front is okay. But if they convert it to two units, the parking in front is no...
No, what's there is there, just the additional parking would have to be in the rear.
Okay, so you're, so there's nothing wrong with the parking in the front?
No, no.
Okay, but...
I just wanted to say that the additional parking would not be in the front, it would be in the rear.
Right, okay, okay. That, thank you. I was confused on that, so, thank you.
Right now, I'm hoping, I would like to deny with the hopes that they come together and are able to convince city council to approve it. Because I do hope that this gets approved, but it's not an easy undertaking. But as of right now, I would, I'd make a motion to deny.
I'll second it.
Erin Rooney?
Yes.
Yes.
Kaylee Mills?
No.
And Abe Gassimpar?
Yes.
All right. Passes two-one for denial. And just so the public knows, it goes to the first council meeting in December, which is December fif- or fifth, first, sorry, December first. They're the authority that has the ability to make the final decision. Uh, they're the, uh, authority that has the ability to, uh, make the final decision. The planning commission is just the recommendation body. So, uh, again, you're, uh, more than welcome to attend that meeting. Uh, if you do want to speak on the item, you would need to sign up beforehand, uh, in that. But if you just want to come to see, uh, obviously it'll be December fifth.
December fifth, what time is that?
Seven thirty, uh, seven o'clock, sorry, boy, I'm off on everything. Seven o'clock, same room as we're in right now. I'm pretty sure that's the first.
Do you have any staff comments?
None, thank you.
Any information, comments?
Just, once again, I'd like to thank the public for participating. Uh, this is how, you know, government is done with, uh, governing close to home and, and neighbors, uh, talking and trying to come to the best conclusion for everybody, so, uh, thank you all. I hope you have a happy holiday season.
Yeah, I have a, a comment there, it's non-related, but it's related to the city of Guthrie and the roads. I decided from Guthrie Lake to go to Liberty Lake, it's embarrassing. It's embarrassing to travel those roads there, so that's something really needs to have an attention. Other than that...